So we won't lose money. We're still having to figure out how we're going to make up the deficit for the last 500 from Harvey. You know, we lost 500 students and that-
They never came back?
No, no, they never came back. And that's about $6 million, I think, that will be off of our state funding. So we don't want to go lower. So I was a little concerned with 6256, but as you see, over the 11 days and yesterday, we were at 7,848. And today, we're like, I think, we're over, about 7,870. So it's trickling up very, very, and some kids are still home. They have not come to school yet. So we're happy with the increase and students are back. I think, Mr.-
Dr. Porter, can you identify what's contributing to the increase in attendance from day one up until now? Can you give us an insight?
Well, you know what I think, and this is just my thought, and if anyone in the audience, Dr. Getwood, Dr. Vine, or Ms. Beatty, or Ms. Londo has anything else, I think parents were waiting to see what it was going to be. If you recall, really, we were out for 16 months. And it was a little apprehensive, you know, and parents didn't want to bring their students to school because they didn't know what we were going to do. So I think as they became more comfortable, as they saw kids coming to school, then they were okay. And I will say this, that Monday, if you look at the Monday, that was a big jump for some, and I think, let's see, last Monday, if you look, it was like a 200 student jump. So once we put the mask mandate in place, then parents became more comfortable. Yes, we've had some COVID cases. However, it hasn't been to the point where we have had to close up yet. I'm not going to say we will not have to, but right now, we're having cases, you know, even the first week. But that, I'm going to say, those kids probably had it before because it was just three days. But I think parents are more comfortable now. And for the most part, I think parents want their children to be in school. They just want to feel that their kids will be safe when they come to our schools.
I know that at this point, there is no virtual learning. However, do we anticipate that at some point, if it were to come to that, that we could request that we are allowed to?
Yes, I think the main, eventually, we're going to have a plan for virtual, but students will have to meet a criteria. You can't just go virtual because you're scared. We need our students in school. Virtual learning is not the optimal tool to teach our students. We need to see them face to face. We need to have them engaged in the learning in school. However, if there are, if there's a health reason, and I'm not saying just call me and tell me my child is sick, if you have a legitimate doctor's excuse, and we know a lot of our life skills students that are critically ill, we'll work with them. We really, we will. And we eventually may have to go that route, but we want our kids to come. And we want to make sure that they're safe. You know, that's what we want to do. And there's so much, and as you do know, over the 16 months, the gaps that we had have widened. They've gotten larger. So now, we're trying to make up for those gaps. You know, our students have to learn a whole lot, and they have to catch up. And we need them here with us. You know, they don't need to be in the bed. They don't need to be at work. They need to be in school because they're children. And that's the only thing they need to be concentrating on is school.
I know that part of the, well, Mr. Thompson, his job duty, that's part of it.
Yes.
But do we have, or are we considering some type of plan to utilize our police department?
Ms. Ambrose, can you turn your mic on? I'm speaking to you, mic please.
Oh, try it on.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry. Do we have a plan where we could possibly use our police department to act as truant officers?
And yes, you're correct on both ends. Mr. Thompson is working, trying to find those students that we cannot find, that have-
Do we think they're here, or have they left the area?
I think they're here. I think they're here. Some have left the area, but I do think they're here. So he is tracking them down. He is working with Dr. Getwood on some instances to try to find how we can do it. There's a company that we're looking at that may be able to help us through the phone service and trying to figure out. But yes, our police officers, they do go out and they look for students. You know, it's just, I'll say this, our community is very close knit. So when a police officer asks, "Do you know where Student A lives?", no one knows where Student A lives.
Right, right.
And no one can tell you. And no one has Student A's phone number, and no one's never heard of Student A. So I'll say this, we really take care of one another in this district, so.
Approximately, how many students are we looking for?
Well, as you see on the numbers, we're at 7840, we're at 7870. So last year, we were like 8,000. I think in September of 19, we were at 8,300. So we're looking about maybe another 500 or 450 students that were out previously before that. But we were at 8,000 at the end of 19. So 300, maybe? Which is, you know, if you see at the beginning, it's a big height. So we're good. And we're going to look for them, and we're going to figure out where they are, and we're going to try to get them in, to try to do what we can to teach them and for them to be successful.
Okay.
But the numbers are up. So the kids are here, and I'll say this, the high school is doing very well, and all the schools, I'll say, are doing very well. But next month, you'll see, hopefully by that time, we'll have some advertisement about the food. There's a bowl, a new bowl that the students are eating, and it's like, I guess, Ms. Jeans, is a bowl that they prepare, and it has noodles and meat, and they have a potato bar. So it's a new menu that our students are really, really enjoying.
Ooh.
And that is good. And believe it or not, if the food is good, students will come. They'll eat. And they'll come to school to eat. So whatever it is, we need to do.
So it's already prepared, or they have to-
It is prepared, but it's like, they have to prepare it. Ms. Jeans, you want to add a little bit more about the bowl?
Okay, we're calling it a billable bowl.
Billable.
And the bowl is billed based on what the student said that they want in it. For one day, for example, the day that I went there, it was a noodle bowl. So they started out with noodles, and then they added, I could choose between chicken broth or beef broth, and then you could add, then you add the vegetables that you want on there, including onions and jalapeno peppers. And then you can choose what type of meat you wanted. What I wanted to do was to test out both meats. So I said, "Give me a half of each." You know, the portion size that I should have. So I had beef and chicken. And then at the end of the line, they actually had some additional spices. Now, I don't know if the spice that they were using, I assume it was also available to the students, because it was just a, it was like, what do they call, it's like a hot sauce that was at the end of the line. And Dr. Porter will tell you, I love hot sauce.
Yes.
So it really, it was a real good bowl. I met the principal when I was en route to the cafeteria, and she was excited. While I was sitting there, a teacher came by and said that she was truly excited about what she had received that day. But we have one teacher that said, all the years he's been at the high school, he's never eaten in the cafeteria, but now he is eating in the cafeteria because he likes the bowl. They have a salad day where they actually could put the hot and spicy chicken on top of a salad. And so the kids like that, too. It wasn't as popular, of course, as the bowl where it's got some broth and other things in it.
And we also hear that the hot and spicy chicken sandwich is really, really good. Now, we hear that the hot and spicy chicken sandwich is the best chicken sandwich in Port Arthur. That's what we hear about ours. Now, I don't know, but we haven't tried it yet, but we will go one day. We will go.
Thank you. For a second there, I was waiting to go back to school.
And that's what we want. We want students to want to come to school. Even if they just want to eat, fine. If we can get them there, we will work with them. So whatever it takes to get them there. Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I just have one question. Do we already have the procedures set in stone and put in place for where we can be able to track the learning loss of our students that are coming back?
We do have tests. We're getting ready to have a BOY test, beginning of year test for our kids, and all of our students will be tested on that. And we'll be able to, they'll be benchmarked to see where they are, and we'll work where they are. We'll start where they are, and we'll move them forward. So yes.
Trustees, one thing I'm going to ask, Dr. Porter, finish his segment on staff report, and then at the end of that segment that he's going over, then if we have time, we can ask questions at that point, if we can do that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, great. And we're really, really happy with that. On this week, as we stated, we started and we initiated, and thank you for your support, the mask mandate. Now, we understand that, and I will say this in talking with some of you, and I heard you, we understood that the governor did institute that we could not mandate masks. And we teach our children that we follow rules, and we have to be models for that. So we have chosen to change our dress code and to place masks in our dress code, which has worked. We are, and I'll say it publicly, we are not going against the governor. What we're doing is taking care of our children and our staff in the best way we know how. Obviously, we cannot mandate vaccines. Some of our staff members have not been vaccinated and have chosen not to be vaccinated, and that is their choice. We do understand that our elementary students from 2 to 11 cannot be vaccinated, so we need to protect them. If you've noticed in the news, children, now, when COVID first came out, they were saying that children didn't get it and it didn't affect children, but children are actually getting it now at a larger rate. On the news the other night, there's, I think it was something like, they were saying 300 times the number than at the beginning. It was some number like that. But we need to protect our children so they will protect their families when they get home. So the only thing we can do is wear our mask, because we understand, and we've been told that, "I wear my mask to protect you." So everyone needs to wear a mask to protect me. So, and that's the only thing we're doing. We're not in opposition with anyone. The only thing we want is for our staff and students to stay safe. And we do not want, you know, we understand, and we have procedures that are in place. They're on the website in case of a COVID case. We've decided two letters would go out at the end of the day. We will have a general letter, and Dr. Vine worked on that with our media person, our new media person is Mrs. Adrienne Lott, and she'll be with us. We'll have a general letter that will go out initiating, letting everyone know that there is a COVID case. And then we will have another letter that will be specific for the ones that have been in close contact. So that is where we are. We're going to continue to encourage our staff members to become vaccinated, and our students that are 12 and up to become vaccinated. I will say, we're extremely proud of our students and our staff members. Yes, we have some that, you know, are lax, but we're addressing those issues. But overall, in this district, our students and staff members have done an excellent job at wearing the mask beginning on last Monday, and we're very, very proud of them. So as we move forward with that, we're going to keep it going.
You have any questions, my trustees, at this time? Doc, with the mask mandate, is that including coming up, you know, and starting on tomorrow, when we have our first football game? Will that includes the football arena as well, with the mask mandate as well?
Dr. Getwood and I had that conversation earlier, so I'm going to ask Dr. Getwood to verbalize what we came up with.
We understand that we have a mandate for the district to wear masks. At this juncture, what we're looking at is enforcing it with our students and staff. And we're going to encourage the visitors. We'll let them know that we have a mask mandate, and we will encourage them to wear masks. But as far as our staff and students, we established guidelines. We met with principals today and other auxiliary sponsors to go over the guidelines, and our students, and riding the bus, even when they're going out of town, we expect them to be masked up.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And as he said, we will have masks at the gate. So we're going to be offering, so they, if they forgot it at home, we will have masks at the gate for ours.
And where, anywhere on school property, extracurricular activities, and what have you, will require masks?
Okay, as we move along, when we're talking about masks and procedures for football, our football game is tomorrow night, our first football game. Lancaster is who we're going to beat. Let's call that real quick. So we're excited to have them. And Dr. Getwood and Mrs. Cole did come up in your folder. You will see a pamphlet like this. We had to come up with guidelines for our staff and students during a game. And we do have those guidelines as well. We have the open up school, reopen up school guidelines. And there's a little, we have to really, really brag on our IT department. They've done an excellent job, and I'm going to show you what Mr. Baloo has come up with. And this is what we're going to play at our games to welcome everyone. Yes, all right.
So now, when are you going to use this?
We're going to play that on our football field when we have our home games. Yes, so that would be on the Jumbotron.
Okay.
Yes, so it's good, it's good. And our people did it, Mr. Baloo and-
That's nice.
I was just about to say that we have an amazing, amazing media team. I had the privilege of working with them my sophomore year up there at the Big Screens, but they do amazing jobs.
They really do. And before we move along, I would like to introduce our new media person, Mrs. Adrienne Lott. Yes, she is. Stand up, Mrs. Lott. Mrs. Lott is no stranger to us. Mrs. Lott was former counselor, and I mean, she's come in with the, she come in at the right time. She was counselor at Travis, and you do know, the principal is out due to illness right now, and the assistant principal is doing a wonderful job at Travis. And then we selected Mrs. Lott, and they didn't really want her to come, but she's with us, so she was anxious. And she was working even before she came here, so office, before she moved to office. So we're happy to have Mrs. Lott on board, and she's been, let's say, learning our community. We'll say that. So she's going to do a great job. So we're excited about football, yes.
You have one more question, Mr. Giller.
Just to take that with the last statement, the game tomorrow, tomorrow night, will it be streaming?
We're going to stream games. I'm not sure if tomorrow will be streamed or not, but I know our home games will be. And-
Streaming tomorrow?
We're streaming tomorrow. Okay, great. We're streaming tomorrow, and it's on our website, if it's the same as last year.
It's a pay.
Is it YouTube?
No, you have to pay.
Okay, you got to pay tomorrow. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And we'll work on that. Yes, okay, you have to subscribe. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move forward. Before we call Kelly, I'm going to just go ahead and finish up my segment, and we talk about COVID and COVID updates. We've talked a little bit about it. We've talked about the mask mandate. And with the mask mandate, we talked about the dress code. If you would get your dress code out, and let's talk a little, it's in your pamphlet, it's in your folder as well. Okay, we understand, and we'll say this, we understand about dress code, and we understand that our students and the dress code is not, it changes from time to time. Our dress code initially in 2016 was developed by our own students. They came up, they asked us, could they look at the dress code? And we allowed our students to do that. And they took pictures, and they decided with some discussion as to what they wanted, and we allowed that. Now, in the dress code, we talked about frays and cuts. And in our generation, you had just pants. You didn't have all of the cuts and the braids and all of that. And anyway, we wouldn't want cuts in our pants. The most we had were patches on our knees. So right now, we're having to change up a little bit on our dress code. So if you look at the first page, now, at the bottom, and we're going to update from time to time, but I think this is the first thing we have to do. If you look at the highlighted area, under short skirts, dresses, pants, slacks, pants, suits, and jeans, the second bullet, "Free from frays, holes, and cuts displaying skin underneath." So we knew that when we talked about it, the cuts and the holes, we saw that, but now they're coming with the patches underneath the cuts and the frays. So we don't see skin. But our policy says no cuts and all that. So I think we can, we just don't want to see skin, but if they wear the cuts and the frays, it's okay. And if there's no-
That's what sells.
Yeah, and that's what they're selling in the stores. So we, and that's what they're buying, but within reason. On the next page, you will see the mask, and what we've said about masks, "Must be appropriately sized for a student face. Must be worn over nose and mouth. No obscene, inappropriate, vulgar, or blatantly offensive words or pictures are appropriate. Masks may not advertise or depict tobacco products, alcoholic beverages, drugs, or any other prohibited substance." So we're implementing our mask in our dress code. Now, on the next page, under other guidelines, we're recommending and trying to, we talk about earrings. We know that we cannot fight it. I mean, pre-K is coming with earrings, and we understand that. And that's just, you know, that's just what they're doing, it's okay. And we cannot prohibit the circular or the hanging earrings from boys and not prohibit it from girls. So we're going to recommend that we just get rid of earrings or prohibit it on our boys completely. Any questions on that? I mean, because I'll say this, we don't want to be the earring police, and they're wearing them. And principals and teachers are addressing it all day, and we don't have time to address earrings. And if they're wearing studs, and it's okay, well, I mean, we're not going to fight earrings, because, you know, I've seen two-year-old boys with earrings. So I don't, we can't fight that.
Yeah, she's got 55.
Yes. And right now, that is not our focus. We're trying to get our kids back.
I'm a little bit old for earrings.
No, but I'll get to that as well. We'll go for, "No obscene, inappropriate, vulgar tattoos on body or body art is permitted." Now, once again, tattoos, we looked at tattoos. Now, we, I mean, tattoos is just something that's happening right now with our young people. They're getting tattoos, and we can't fight that. So we cannot prohibit when a student gets a tattoo, because when they get it, what are we going to do? Just tell them that you can't come to school? I mean, but what we've said was, what we've said, that we don't want anything that is obscene. So we're going to work with the tattoos as well. So I mean, it's just, you know, some of our kids have an entire sleeve. They call it a sleeve on their arm. That's a tattoo. So, you know, what can we do? You can't tell them to take it off. So I mean, as I said, we want to pick our battles, and our major thing is that we want our kids to come to school and learn. That's what we want and focus on, education. Now, the last page will tell you, "If the principal determines that a student's grooming or clothing violates the school's dress code, the student will be given an opportunity to correct the problem at school. If not corrected, the student may be assigned to in-school suspension for the remainder of the day until the problem is corrected, or until a parent or designate brings an acceptable change of clothing to the school. Repeated offenses may result in more serious disciplinary action in accordance with the student code of conduct." Now, principals still will have autonomy to address those issues that are causing disruption to the academic classroom. We don't want any disruptions, and principals still can't address it. It goes, and the same thing with the hair. Now, we're seeing different colored hair, but if it's not a disruption to our classrooms, then it's not going to be addressed. Now, I'll say this, students adhere to things quicker than us. It's not bothering the students. Most of the time, when you see the red hair, or the green hair, or the orange hair, it's bothering us as adults. We're the ones that's upset about it. The students are moving around like nothing, because it doesn't even bother them. Because that's their generation. So if it's not bothering them, and we're teaching them, why should it bother us? So we just have to, we're dealing, we're working with young people. Even though some of us are older, we're working with young people. And we just have to realize what is in their best interest. Any question?
No, sir. I would just like to say, I think that was a good move and a good idea, because like you said, most of the jeans nowadays, that's just how the style is nowadays, and that's how most of it comes. And just for clarification purposes, only if it does not show skin.
Only if it doesn't show skin.
Only if it does not show skin.
Yeah, because that's what they're selling in the stores. So we, unless we're going into the clothing business, that's not our issue. And so, and I mean, in actuality, the kids look real nice. They're neat. Most of our kids come with pride when they come in their clothes. At the first day of school, I mean, every student had on new clothes. I mean, it was just their white tennis shoes, I mean, black tennis, they were new tennis, new clothes, and they were proud. Boys with belts, and they looked really, really well. So I mean, the hair was cut, I mean, it was really neat. Girls were dressed appropriately. So I cannot complain about anything that our children have done for the last 12 days. They really have been remarkable. So we're proud, and we're happy to just have them back. And that is what we want. We want them to come back, and we want to make sure they're safe, and teach them, we do not want to be the closed police. Okay? Any other questions on that? Okay, we'll talk a little bit more later on, but at this time, I'm going, we want to thank Kelly Services for working with the Port Arthur Independent School District and making sure that we have substitutes in our classrooms. Of course, teacher shortage across the United States, and we know we have to have our substitutes. And Kelly does a great job at making sure that we're covered. There's a lot to do, but we're doing it. So I'm going to ask Ms. Tomer Anderson to come up, along with Mr. Keith Elliott. Mrs. Anderson is our person that, our employee that works with us on site. Mr. Elliott is the Director of Client Services for Kelly. So thank you for coming to town today.
Thanks for having Dr. Porter. And thank you to the board for giving us the time to talk about it. We may not be able to explain tonight. We'll run through, and we can, you know, we're-
Great, perfect.
Could you guys hear me okay or can you use a microphone?
I mean, you may want it, yeah, for the audience.
Uh, thank you again for having us, folks. And Dr. Portery, I also say thank you for not making us follow the football hype video. Uh, that was, was rather impressive. And, and, uh, and so we do appreciate not having to back, back that up. But, uh, I do wanna say again, thank you for having us. My name is Keith Elliott. I'm the Director of Client Services. Uh, I came in tonight because I can give a little bit more national perspective on what Kelly's seeing. So if there are questions or things about things that Kelly does on a national level, I can certainly speak to that. I also, uh, I'm working closely with Tomra. I'm a new ad kind of the district. This is my first time here, my first time in your building. Uh, been in this position for about three months now. Uh, and so just now kinda getting out, first time through the school district, and this was a good opportunity to come around. So, um, we're gonna dive in and talk about a few things tonight here, and, and kinda tell you how things have gone so far this year. Talk about some of the challenges that, that we're seeing early in the year, and some of the things that we're gonna, gonna try to implement, uh, here as we move forward to try and, and continue to raise fill rates within the district. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Tomra kick us off.
Thank you. Hello, Superintendent Dr. Portery, President Barti, Vice President Lofton and trustees. Good evening. Uh, thank you so much for inviting us to come here and speak today and being willing to, uh, and being open to hear some of the things that we have implemented to help the school district during this, that makes a difference, huh? Uh, to help the school district during, uh, these trying times. The report we are about to deliver is from the timeframe of July 1st, uh, to actually today, August 26th. So our total subpool as of today is three hundred and ninety-eight, uh, Kelly Services employees, all positions. Uh, one hundred and fifty-seven of those employees are degreed or have, uh, some college. We are working with the school district with those, uh, degreed employees uh, in collaborating with training. The school district does graciously provide training, uh, for the certification program. I believe it's a representative that actually, um, tutors, uh, for the, um, uh, PPR. And so some of our, our degreed employees are very interested in becoming certified, and that is, uh, very beneficial to the district. Recently, we have had some updates with our main system called Frontline, formerly known as Aesop. Uh, that update provides a more secure access for substitutes to utilize. So for example, their password used to be the last four digits of their social security number. It is now a randomly selected five-digit number. On the district side, that update provides more options for reporting. It also provides more options for monitoring the absences closely on the campuses, and gives a little bit more flexibility when creating the absences in the system, as it is a web-based program and accessible twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Time Clock Plus is the clocking system that was requested by the district. And Kelly Services did respond, uh, by implementing it and making it available to our employees via the app on their phone. Uh, whether it is an iPhone or an Android, they are able to download it and utilize it. And the Port Arthur Independent School District Technology Department has graciously helped us with installing the shortcut on every computer in the school district, so that, um, substitutes can utilize it either in the library, in a technology room, or either in a, uh, in their classroom with the actual computer there designated to that room. With our onboarding and hiring process, we have accommodated, uh, the school district as we understand the needs have, uh, actually increased. And so, um, with that, we have implemented virtual recruiters. So, uh, in that process, what they do is the pre-screening, and they do the, that's a telephone call pre-screen, and then they actually send out the application after that pre-screen goes well. So, um, that part of it, that's what they do. Once that application is sent, immediately, we receive, in, in here locally in this office, we receive the completed application, and then we go from there with scheduling a face-to-face interview. We have implemented group interviews in order to expedite that hiring process. We have also implemented and continued the group orientations, but also individual hiring appointments. So instead of making individuals wait until a scheduled orientation, if they are ready on a Monday, but the orientation is Wednesday, we will see them on that Monday. The district, uh, excuse me, the school district no longer requires a TB skin test. That was really helpful for us, since we mirror the hiring, uh, requirements. So we no longer require the, uh, TB skin tests either. Um, but we still do the, uh, background test, uh, background screening, excuse me. That would include, uh, fingerprinting, as well as a sex offender registry, all of those different things. We're able to see, uh, and make sure that we are hiring people with a clean background to work with the children in the community, as well as in the school district. We have implemented twenty-five-dollar gift cards, uh, offering it as an incentive for those hard-to-feel, uh, needs at certain campuses, either because of distance or, um, you know, just very, various reasons that substitutes have for, um, not being able to get to certain schools. You know, we've said, hey, we'll offer a twenty-five-dollar incentive if you can, you know, take this position. Hopefully, it will help you in some way, but we want you to be committed to this position. And so far, within one week of implementing it, we have seven, uh, substitutes that did, uh, accept that, uh, gift card. And, and it, it was throughout the school district that they ended up taking positions. FaceTime hiring, so FaceTime, uh, appointments. What we've done is, a lot of people we've recruited have had, uh, either second jobs or they're coming from a previous position, uh, given their two weeks' notice to come over and now start a career as a substitute teacher. They're seeking a career in education. And so what we did is, we're working with them while they're putting in a two weeks' notice somewhere else. We know they, they're probably getting off at five o'clock, and so we've extended our hours to accommodate even those individuals doing FaceTime interviews, uh, like at six o'clock, seven o'clock, just to make sure that we are capturing as many people as we possibly can to fill those positions, those openings. What we do is, we scan the documents required. Um, they are filling out the applications and going through the same process as everybody else. Um, but because of the immediate needs, we are making sure that we are seeing them on the FaceTime screen, talking with them, and getting everything that we need. A lot of these people have already been fingerprinted, and that's a plus. Um, so, or, or, you know, it could be because of the reason that they're working at whatever job they're currently at, required them to be fingerprinted, so they were already in the system. So that's a good thing, and so we were able to hire them very quickly. Community involvement. Uh, we still work with the Port Arthur Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Port Arthur Education Foundation. They do have an internship program. After they have trained individuals at their location, we are able to work with them to recruit people from there. We work with Lamar State College, Port Arthur, Lamar University, and several other, uh, community, uh, organizations in order to recruit as well. In an effort to help protect our employees from the, uh, COVID-19, you know, um, virus and situation that is going on. So what we, what we've done is, we've provided information, uh, safety information. We make sure that we are giving them updates on what is required, what's mandated, what's not mandated, what are the school's requirements and regulations where it's pertaining to COVID-19, how to properly use their PPE, um, making them understand the importance of it. Social distancing included. We have also recently, uh, been, uh, been notified that we are approved to offer a one-hundred-dollar incentive for all Kelly Services employees who agree to be vaccinated. We're hoping that that will encourage them to be vaccinated, as we do share your concern in making sure that all the students are safe, everyone is safe, including our teachers and administrators. And notice I say "our," because we, we take our partners, partnerships seriously. So, uh, yes, we wanna make sure also that everyone is safe. Bonuses, we have lowered our requirement for substitutes, our employees, to receive bonuses. And this is on all levels, all positions. Initially, it was, uh, the requirement was a hundred and forty days that they were required to work before they could receive, uh, one-point-five percent of their earnings for the academic year. Now it is seventy days, and it's paid out twice in academic year, once in January and once in July. Do you have anything you would like to add? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so starting off this year, uh, it had, there have been some challenges. And, uh, what we have seen this year is our vacancies, uh, not only locally, but on a national level, are higher than we've ever seen in the industry. Uh, when I, when I speak of a vacancy, uh, different schools kinda term those differently. But when I speak of a vacancy, I talk about a position that we're filling for a, a, a long period of time, a long-term assignment, uh, something that in many cases maybe wasn't able to be filled, um, you know, through, through full-time hiring. We've seen those, uh, nationally up about thirty percent, uh, which is, is a dramatic increase, as I'm sure, sure you guys can imagine. What that has done here locally, uh, just to, to give a comparison, year over year, in August of 2020, uh, we filled eight-hundred-and-twenty-six of nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine positions here. So far, for August of 2021, we have filled two-thousand-one-hundred-one, nineteen positions of three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-six. So you can see how with the vacancies, uh, I, absences are up pretty considerably, and that's a challenge that, that we're working to, to fight right now. Uh, along with that, we're continuing to see concerns over the, the Delta variant and, and what has, has creep, crept back up with COVID here recently. Uh, what that's causing, we are seeing in some, some situations, uh, the high-risk populations, like our retirees, uh, are opting to teach online or have decided to wait a little bit longer to come back to teaching. The other thing that we're, we're seeing as a challenge early on this year is the increases that we're seeing local businesses, um, come forward with as far as pay is concerned. Uh, in the past, you may have been competing with other school districts locally. Now you're competing with Walmart. Now you're competing with Burger King. Now you're competing with, with a, a bunch of different types of, of businesses. Whereas where Kelly used to be able to go after the, the passive candidates and kinda bring them in, uh, train them up to be substitute teachers, that's become more challenging, uh, due to competition in the market. So we are definitely seeing some challenges as we start the year here. We do have some ideas, uh, that we are going to work with the district on to see if we can, can implement some new strategies to try to raise fill rates here as we get kicked off this year. Uh, some of the things that, that we want to make sure that we make you all aware of, the earlier you get absences in, so the earlier the district puts absences in, the higher our fill rates are gonna be, the more, more positions we're going to fill for you. So we always ask that from, from your side, that you encourage teachers to, to get absences in, entered early, because there are so many absences right now in the state of Texas, that teachers have options. They can choose where they wanna work. They can build their schedules a month in advance and not think twice about it. Uh, another thing that we want, we will talk to the district about, and I think we've had some of this in place in the past, we've seen a lot of success across the country with building subprograms, where we put buildings, we put a sub on-site every day that shows up and knows that they will be assigned a job once they get there. The most successful programs we've seen run that have done this have brought teachers in and offered them a long-term rate from day one, where they come in, they know they're, they're gonna show up every day. They get paid at that long-term rate. Um, they show up and they, they're assigned out every day. And we've seen that be very successful in other areas. So we will talk to the district about some solutions like that. Uh, we will also be, with the, the number of vacancies that we're seeing in this area. I mentioned that I'm, I'm new into, to, to my role with Kelly. I've been with Kelly about three years now. In this role, part of, part of that is to come in and assess where we start to see fill rate dips and see what we can do to try to get those things turned around. And meeting with Tomra and kinda going through some things here this week, uh, we have talked about being able to add some incentives to the vacancy positions. So I'm gonna be working with, uh, with our leadership team to see what we can do to put some incentives around getting some of your vacancies filled that we have right now. Uh, we have some, some smaller incentives, but on these vacancies, I think we've got a little bit more flexibility, where we can offer a little bit more of an incentive to get some of those positions filled for you. So we will be working on that. Um, and then, uh, outside of that, the other thing that Kelly has done is we have added, uh, an additional, uh, additional staffing. As this school year started up, as I mentioned, the vacancies have been higher than we've ever seen before. And so in reaction to that, Kelly is adding additional staff, uh, to, to add more people into our recruiting teams, to our, our onboarding teams, and to our talent teams, which staff the positions on a day-in, day-out basis. So I know Tomra has you guys covered on a local, uh, level with a lot of the things that you guys see here locally, but she also has some support nationally and, and what we're going to be looking at to try to address some of the challenges early on that we've seen with vacancies within the district. So, uh, with that, folks, um, if there are any questions that we can take, Tomra and I would be happy to, to try to answer some questions for the board. Um, we'll open it up to the floor.
All right, this time, Ambrose and Mr. Getwood.
Thank you very much. Uh, obviously, you put great emphasis in your presentation, so thank you for that. I'm gonna cut straight to the chase. Ms. Anderson, there has been some very unfavorable compliments regarding your interacting, your daily, uh, duties in terms of, uh, hiring, orientation. I am of the belief, everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. And from what this board has heard, they're not getting a whole lot of that. So I'd just like to know, what are you doing to better bridge that gap between those employees who, um, is having difficulties getting through to you, communicating, uh, via phone, email, text message, smoke signals, or what have you? Uh, but we need to make sure that, um, we are properly staffed. I know that is a problem. But I would just like to know your process from like, the moment, say, if I were to come in and, um, apply for employment, what happens from that point up until the time that ultimately I can get hired on, uh, as a substitute, um, working in the Port Arthur Independent School District under the umbrella of Kelly Services?
So first, uh, I believe you were, you were, I don't know if you're sharing.
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Uh, excuse me, I said, uh, first, I don't know if you're sharing information about a particular instance or subject, uh, or particular situation.
It's broad.
It's, it's.
It's broad.
I was gonna say, if it's specific, I'd be more than happy to talk with Dr. Portery about it, um, and not discuss particulars in, in the public forum. But if it's, if it's a general question, I would say, um, I, I, and you know, I just, I just have to be really honest with you. I, I really don't come from a background of, um, privilege or entitlement. Um, I, I believe in working hard for what I have, and I, I was taught to use words like "thank you" and "please." And my overarching point is that I believe in treating everyone equally, meaning I don't esteem any substitute above any other. Um, and that perspective happens to be in alignment with the Texas law of being an equal opportunity employer. Um, unfortunately, I have had inner, interactions with, uh, different employees who do feel that because of their connections, because of who they know, um, or who they're related to, that I should set certain people aside and treat them with priority. But unfortunately, in my position, I am not able to do so. Um, I am firm and I am direct, but, uh, as far as being disrespectful, that doesn't happen. Um, but I do have to uphold the fact, too, that we, if we have a certain criteria to meet as far as background, that's another situation where people get very upset. But we have a strict screening process that we have to follow, um, because we do take the liability. Uh, people forget, we have a huge liability that we take on from the district when we hire substitutes, uh, whether it's workers' comp, whether it's an incident, uh, whether, you know, whether it's a negative incident like fighting or anything like that, we take the risk. And so we have to be strict, and we have to stand firm on our policies and not bend where that is concerned. Um, but as far as the recruiting process, um, from the time that a person calls and they ask about or inquire about applying, we, we ask for the email address so that we can send step-by-step instructions. A lot of times, it may sound overwhelming over the phone trying to explain it, especially if the person is not tech savvy. But, um, we, we do send out an email that gives the instructions. It has a link that they can readily click on. The link is also provided to them in the, uh, website, or, excuse me, on the website for Port Arthur ISD, so they're able to get to it from there as well. Um, and then from that point, when they complete the profile, they are sent the application, and that's from the remote recruiters, or it could be from myself. Um, after that application is complete, we immediately know, we immediately get an email, um, that says that it's been complete. From there, we schedule a face-to-face interview, whether it be independent, or, excuse me. From there, we schedule a face-to-face interview, whether it be independent, or, excuse me, individually or in a group. And then what we do is do the group interview or do the individual interview, and then after that, we give them the requirements of the background, whether it be their fingerprinting they need to schedule afterwards, or whether they need to get their official transcripts. We basically, we do, we monitor, excuse me, we mirror the school district's requirements. So those are the same things that they would have to get or obtain for the school district in order to be certified as well, so we require some of those same things. Sometimes it does take 24 to 48 hours, depending on whether it's coming from TEA or the Texas Department of Public Safety in order to read those backgrounds, but we certainly can't rush the process. We have to just sort of wait until that's done. Normally, if a person, you know, goes through everything and just is kind of on top of it, it really takes savvy, it only takes maybe two to three days, and that's with a person really being on it. Like they're, the first day, they're getting that email, they're applying, they're contacting me, "Oh, Ms. Anderson, I completed it, I don't know if you saw the email yet." Oh, okay, you know, I go in and I scheduled the interview right away. They select what time they can come. I've had people hired in the same day, and all in the same day, because they were able to get everything together.
So you're able to fingerprint and orientate them-
Yep. Absolutely, I've done it all in the same day, even most recently, Dr. Porter came to me and said, "Hey, we have a need," and it was about eight people, and he asked if I could help orientate those people, get them all done, all in one day. And so literally went over what I would go over in an interview, went over that with all those people, as well as asked for their requirements, as well as made sure their background was clear, everything. It just so happens, all of them had been fingerprinted already, so that was a plus, or else we would have had to wait. But they were all fingerprinted already, and all we had to do was get them in, check to make sure it was clear, and then hire them in. And unfortunately, one of them I could not hire, because the background did not meet the requirement, and I still haven't heard from that person. So we do have strict guidelines that we have to follow, but in no means is it to be disrespectful, it is to ensure and mirror the practices of the school district, that we are interested in the academic success of the students in the community and their safety. So, you know, a lot of people can talk well in an interview, but it's really shown when they get out there in the field, that's when they really show who they really are. And so we try our best to get it at the front end, but, you know, sometimes it doesn't always work out, and there are some that, you know, we have to pull back, because once they get out there, they don't show that proven ability to do well, and we handle it from there. But for the most part, we're doing our best to make sure that the children are safe, especially from the recruiting end, and making sure we're providing adequate candidates.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Tag on that real quick. We do train our folks to make sure that we're evaluating substitutes, and, you know, if we're asking certain things to be done, you know, documents to be returned and those types of things, we do coach our staff to say, "Hey, let's make sure as we're evaluating these teachers, that these are teachers that we would want in front of our kids," you know, teaching our children. And so we try to look at it that way, and I think sometimes that does come off as, you know, hey, this person's not, you know, being as accommodating as maybe what I was used to, but there is that evaluation portion that I'm glad Tamara referenced, so thank you.
Mr. Getwood.
Approximately, how many local vacancies do we have as of now?
So, I looked at that here before we came in, I think we were about 110, does that sound right? Right around 110, I think, is what I saw right before we came in, were the vacancies. But of those, of those, I think we have 60, 60-ish filled right now, so we have a large portion of those filled. We still have several more to go.
Mr. Giller, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed and then Mr. Giller.
I personally just want to say thank you for your hard work, the work that Kelly Services has provided this district. I just want to say that I personally appreciate it, and I want to congratulate you on a job well done. Keep fighting, keep doing what you're doing, keep making changes. We hear you, we know it's a very tough job, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, thank you so much.
Mr. Getwood.
I want to thank Kelly Services also for the great job that y'all do. I used to be a campus administrator, so I come back from the days when I had to, I know Dr. Porter did this too, you know, when you got to wake up, if you get that phone call at 6 o'clock or 5:30 in the morning, "I'm not going to be there, I'm sick today," and it's my turn to call the subs, and, you know, like, you called me early, you're waking my wife up and you're waking me up, you know, but, you know, I would have to sit there and struggle and find a sub, and unless you're in the business or you've done that before, you realize how tough that is. And, you know, and also, you know, this goes back to the days when you didn't have the opportunity of the background checks, and so, you know, you may be liable for calling in the wrong kind of person, so the resource that the district has with Kelly Services is so valuable. And on top of that, I know that you guys have encouraged some substitutes to become actual classroom teachers. We have, I've worked, you know, back when I used to, and y'all have been around for a while, and, you know, I've worked with some substitutes that were every bit as good as any certified teacher that we had in the classroom, they just had to get the certification. So to have the push, you know, not only from campus administrators, but from you guys as well, to carry on through with the certification is fantastic. What, how, what's the youngest teacher that y'all can hire on as a substitute? How old?
18 years of age or older.
Oh, wow. Well, I got one that's 20, that's becoming a teacher right now. So, you better be good, or I'm going to yell at you too, okay? Y'all are fantastic, thank you so much for your-
I have one question, Mr. Lofton. With the district moving within the pay scale, is it, Kelly, have y'all adjusted with the pay scale as we moved, or is it something that you have to make the decision on?
When you say adjust the pay scale, like-
For example, the district had, by giving raises in the district-
Yes.
When we give our raises, do Kelly raise their bar as well, or is it something that Kelly has to do on their own?
No, so the way that we operate is you guys tell us what you want us to pay the subs.
Okay.
And then we have an agreed-upon markup on top of that, that goes, that does not change regardless of what y'all's pay rate is. So if you guys are to say, "Hey, we feel like it's time to give a raise to the teachers" and, you know, and reaction to the market, then we will work with you on that, but you guys set the rate for what we pay the substitute teachers.
Okay.
Mr. Lofton?
Oh, that's what I wanted to know, but I also want to know, how do we reach out, how do you all reach out into the community to recruit some of our college graduates that who might not know about Kelly Services, to know they can actually get there, start teaching there? How do we reach out, how do you all reach out and recruit those people?
Actually, that's a really good question. With the Port Arthur Education Foundation, annually, we hold a career readiness event at the Lamar State College Port Arthur location, where we get all of the seniors from Memorial High School and Early College High School to come out, along with, of course, other school districts, and we get them there and encourage them to apply, and we also do a presentation. We also participate in the job fairs at Lamar University and get the people from the Education Department there. So those that are majoring in education, and just basically getting those interns that work and get trained with the chamber, we are out there, and we also communicate with the parents in the PTA, excuse me, in the PTA, we communicate with them and we give flyers out when we go to the campuses. So, yeah, we do a lot of recruiting in the community. Great question.
I believe that's it from the trustees, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
President Barti, trustees, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Minutes. Consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the July 15, 2021 regular board meeting and the August 5, 2021 board retreat, uh, board budget retreat. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider and if appropriate, adopt the proposed 2021-2022 budget. Can I get a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider and if appropriate, approve the interest and sinking fund tax rate of 0.534600 per $100 of the taxable value for the 2021 appraisal roll. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider and if appropriate, adopt the maintenance and operation tax rate of 1.05170 per $100 of the taxable value for the 2021 appraisal roll. Can a motion?
Second.
Second? Have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider and if appropriate, approve the tax rate ordinance to set the tax rate for the 2021-2022 school year.
So move.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
And a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, for the 2021-2022 school year, we delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, TEC Subscript 11.1511C4, to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC Subscript 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under TEC 49.006. This included approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit netting Chapter 48 funding.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Reed, I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Giller, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the Board President per policy BE locals. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which the event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I'm going to give you a minute to look through your consent agenda. I'd like to get a motion for consent agenda item 6 through 32.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by Vice President Lofton and second by trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Personnel. Dr. Porter.
Trustees, I have given you the list of teachers for your consideration.
Consider if and appropriate, approve the employment of teachers. Can I have a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Reed and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion.
Dr. Porter, discussion?
That's my action. Okay. In your, as we move forward, I thought we would discuss how we would address the findings. Obviously, all of you know that in May, we called for a curriculum audit. I have given you the executive summary of the audit once before, and you have it again in your packet, but of course, the audit, the audit came back and it's 300 pages, and so there's a lot that we have to address. So there are some findings and things that we have to work on, and what I thought I would do, I would take one finding per board meeting, and we would talk about it and review it, and we would talk about policies that will have to be addressed due to the findings. So I've already, in your book, in your folder, you'll see one policy that has already been written. We have policies that are written, but it's going to take some time to just make sure, go through a fine-tooth comb to make sure they're all in line. But we'll start on, in our September board, we're going to do some things tonight, but due to time, we'll start in September, and we'll go over findings, we'll go over the audit report, and then we will construct, create policies. We do have policies that are already in place that address the issues, but we're going to update our policies. And in actuality, that's what board members do, they write policies for the district. That is actually your job, to write the policies, and that is what we're going to do, yes.
How many policies-
There were several, just suggestions and findings and recommendations, and they're in your, in that executive summary.
You said you want to address each one?
We're going to, yes, one, we're going to do one, yes, one, but we can't possibly, we'll be here all night talking about it, and there are a lot of things we can talk. So we'll start next month, and we'll look over it and make sure that everything is in place. We also want to talk, if I may, this goes in line with discussion a little bit, and I want you all to know, and I want to talk about police, we do have police on our campuses that we need, and there is security that we're going to have at our games as well, that we want people to know. Dr. Getwood has been working with Chief Base, and we have security that will be installed and being installed now, so, Dr. Getwood.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Good evening again, board members and President Barti. We have, in an effort to increase our safety and security at the Memorial Stadium, we've installed metal detectors, and the metal detectors are the results of no prior incidents. We are being proactive rather than reactive, and we will have a metal detector by each gate on the home side and on the visitor's side. You will go through the metal detectors, we also will have baskets there for you to put your metal objects in, and we'll check those. We have trained staff, we've had a professional company to come in and train staff on how to operate the metal detectors and the things that we need to do. Police officers will be there, but it will not be their jobs to monitor the metal detectors, it will be civilians handling that. But now, in the event that the metal detector goes off, we do have the police with the warrants to do the search. So here again, we are not anticipating any problems, we have not had problems in reference to any kind of weapons, but we are, as I indicated, we're going to take a stance, and our stance is not to be reactive, it's to go out and get out in front of any situation that may arise. So that's where we are with the metal detectors, we'll have signage posted by the gates, and we also have already begun to, on the website, thanks to Mrs. Lot, to provide information about the installation of the metal detectors, and that we will be using those come in the first home football game.
Ms. Ambrose?
Thank you, Dr. Getwood. Let me ask this question. Now, I know that our police will obviously be at the football games, how many PAPD are we using?
Well, that hasn't been determined yet, but we sometimes will use an additional aid offices from the Port Arthur Police Department, or it may be less. It really depends upon the event, and when I say the event, the team that we are playing will dictate the number of offices we have, because there are some schools that will bring a large crowd with them on the visitor's side.
Right.
So we adjust based upon what we anticipate the crowd may look like.
Okay. They'll handle the street, and our police will handle the interior inside the stadium?
The, well, they will go wherever Chief Base assigned them, because he makes the assignments. And normally, we have officers working from PAPD inside the stadium, and all offices also work in traffic, and we use a lot of the PA ISD offices to assist in the parking lot at the conclusion of games, as well as with traffic, and Port Arthur Police Department is very familiar with the traffic flow. So in essence, in answering your question, it'll be a combination of the two groups.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our discussion for this evening.
Okay, Dr. Porter, you have any information?
No, not at this time. We talked about our attendance, so we'll-
Okay. Before we adjourned it tonight, I want to enter, I want to recognize, uh, uh, a former, uh, school board member and now the city council member, uh, Mr. Don Ray Frank is here. And at this ti- and at this time, I would like to turn our attention to one of our trustees, Mr. Robert Reed.
Thank you, President Barti. I want all of you to know that, uh, tonight is my last board meeting as a board member. I have submitted a letter of resignation from the board. It's for personal reasons, but it's nothing bad. Everybody's well, uh, we are literally moving on with our lives, and, um, we're very excited about it. But unfortunately, it, it does put me in a position, uh, to act with integrity and forfeit my seat on the board. I'm still a member of Port Ar- um, still a resident of Port Arthur, but, um, it's just an exciting opportunity for us to take and move on with our lives. So it's really good news, but it's bittersweet, because I want you to know that one of the biggest honors of my life has been to serve on this school board. I've been on here since, uh, May of two thousand thirteen, and I have been truly honored to serve in this same position with these other six people that are up here and some people in the past, like my good friend, Don Ray Frank, who's such a, a good friend and a good friend of my entire family. And, uh, so I really have been, uh, in a good position, uh, to be able to do some good things while we've been here. I am not ashamed to tell you that the number one decision that I ever made on this board was hiring Dr. Mark Porter as superintendent, because we are only as good as our leadership. And Dr. Porter, he's the best. And I also want you to know that what makes us so, what makes us operate so well under Dr. Porter is all these people in this room right here. Ms. Carrier over here, such a wonderful attorney, solid advice all the time. And, uh, my good friend, Dr. Getwood, uh, who I've known for quite a while. Really sad to, to leave you. And, uh, our wonderful, strong ladies over there. Uh, Dr. Beatty, you're so wonderful. And Dr. Vine, you as well. Y'all, it's just been a pleasure for me to, to serve your, serve here with you. And, uh, I'm so blessed to know many teachers. I taught in this district for twelve years, taught, was an assistant principal. I went to school here, graduated from Old Thomas Jefferson High School as a yellow jacket, maroon and gold. Now, we got some bumblebees around here, but I love my jackets, go jackets, and.
Sham rocks, sham rocks, don't forget sham.
Yeah, sham. Well, you know, I got one of those out there too, you know? Crawfish, bootin', kush, 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 jackets, jackets, push, 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 you know? I remember all that, but, but anyway, um, it's, we have such a wonderful city here. We have such a wonderful community. And I can tell you right now, P A I S D, right now, is the best that it can be. We, we have so much to be proud of, but we're only as good as the, you know, as the people we have behind us. The teachers, the custodians, maintenance people, all of you are so wonderful. And there's a part of me that I really, really hate to go, but there's another part of me that I was so proud to spend the time that I did with you. And on a closing note, I want my, uh, my family, y'all stand up, please. We had so much fun, uh, and Lucy, Lucy, you too. Uh, one's missing, my daughter Jessica, the one who's becoming a school teacher. So maybe she'll be here in a couple of years, Dr. Porter, teaching school, you know? But, um, we had such a good time campaigning. Everybody always asks me, you know, you got, you got those signs out, who's helping you? Well, that was my two sons and me that delivered all of those signs all throughout Port Arthur. And my wonderful wife just helping me out with the social media and just smiling everywhere that we go. And me just saying, don't, don't vote for Robert Reed, just vote for Mary Ann's husband, you know? So, good lingo. But anyway, guys, um, I'm going to miss you, but I want you to know that we are okay and that we love you and that if, we, we, we love Port Arthur ISD, and we're here to always back you and say nothing but great things about what a great place this is. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Reed, I first, I first want to say, uh, thank you for your tenure here. As a, as a trustee, um, I see the work that you've put in, uh, since, since I've been on the board and, and you've been here a little bit longer than me, you and Mr. Lofton. And, um, I seen the work that you've put on the board, and you said that, uh, one of your best choices that you've made to, to hire Mr. Mark Porter here as superintendent. Um, anytime you need us, anything that you need, we're here, uh, you know? Don't forget about us, come visit us, you know? And, uh, we gonna miss you, but I'm definitely gonna miss, miss Mary Ann. My friend, I'm gonna miss my friend. But hey, enjoy, enjoy it. We had some good times in the past few years, enjoy it. Um, and I wish you and your family nothing but the best.
Thank you.
I wish you well too. Your house will be working together.
That's right, we're together, that's how it is.
Uh, we, we had a good time together. Uh, hate to see you leave for those reasons, but, uh, enjoy your life. Enjoy your wife, enjoy your family. Uh, you might even get you some hair back on your head.
Hey, she works hard for this.
But, uh, it, it, it's been a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, uh, you've helped me out a lot, you know, seen me through some stuff and also called just to, just to talk. And I really appreciate that. Uh, don't be a stranger. Don't, don't take our numbers out your phone either.
I will, y'all helped me out a lot too, thank you, thank you.
Man, this is bittersweet. I know that you got, uh, another life to live, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate Mary Ann for allowing you to, uh, spend this time with us, and I most certainly appreciate all the knowledge and, uh, support that you give me over the years. Robert Reed, I'm gonna miss you, my friend.
Thank you, man.
Trustee Robert Reed, my P A, Tom Joyner. As we like to say, although I am new to the board, um, I have had the opportunity of working with you as a student leader, and you have been nothing but an inspiration and a leader since I've met you. Um, it has been an honor and a privilege to work alongside you as another trustee. I wish you nothing but the best, um, to both of you all and your family as well. And we will be in contact, I will be giving you my number tonight, um, because I got some learning to do.
Mr. Reed, on behalf of the Port Arthur Independent School District, thank you for all of the time, the energy, the love that you have given to the Port Arthur Independent School District, to the students, to the staff. Um, it has been wonderful working with you, uh, the talks that we've had on education level, on just the craziness of things that are happening. It has been enlightening. This is not going to be a goodbye. I'm sure you're here, and so you're always accessible.
Thank you.
So thank you again, and we will talk soon.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
And at this time, we would like to call for the adjournment of the meeting at seven fifty-one. I have a motion on the floor.
Motion.
And I have a second by Mr. Trustee Robert Reed.
Yes.
All in favor, I say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.